Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled work session for the Board of Commissioners for Monday, April 3, 2023. This group met in executive session at 6:00 PM today to discuss two legal issues. And we also met on the 20th of March to discuss personnel matters. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gonda.
President.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart Isaway. Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief? Our first presentation tonight will be a presentation by William Richter and Jamie Schlesinger regarding ordinance P4 2023, and that is our general obligation bond issuance.
Yep. Tonight, so I've been here a few times over the last couple of months to talk about the potential financing related to various capital projects. The good news is every time I come, it looks like we're borrowing a little bit less, which is good news for you because it seems like you've been receiving some grant funding and utilizing other funds to offset some of the costs of the borrowing. So what we're going to talk about tonight is kind of the next steps of the process. The big idea for tonight is the concept of a parameters ordinance. What this is, is a legal approval of the ordinance before you issue any public debt. So what we're going to ask you to do is eventually to consider an ordinance that essentially locks in maximum interest rates, maximum borrowing amounts, maximum maturity associated with this transaction. We're doing this because we want to have as much flexibility as possible for when we actually price the bonds. We are about a month away from pricing the bonds because we obviously have to go through the various steps for multiple readings. We are going to be working through the rating within the next week or so. So given that we won't have the actual final amortization or borrowing in interest rates, by the time we approve the ordinance, we have to establish maximum conditions associated with any borrowing. This is pretty normal in Pennsylvania. Back in the good old days, you would do it the old-fashioned way where you would borrow the funds and issue the debt on the day of the night of an ordinance. Here, because we want to have maximum flexibility for when we actually price the bonds, we may decide to price it the day after your ordinance is approved or a week after that, depending on what we think the market looks like. We'll be working with attached officials, the underwriter, Janie Montgomery Scott, to determine what we think is the best day to price the bonds. If we see things are, you know, looking pretty solid, we're going to move as quickly as possible. But if we see things, you know, becoming somewhat volatile, we may adjust a little bit. Obviously, we have to meet the needs of the cash flows of the township here, so, you know, we'll work toward moving, you know, as quickly as possible. So what you're going to see from this presentation is although the borrowing amount I keep saying is lower than we're going to borrow, the parameters will look more than what we're really going to do, and that's because of these parameters that we have to establish. Just a quick snapshot of the interest rate environment. It's, you know, been somewhat interesting last, you know, few weeks, given some of the banking crisis that we've had with various banks. That's partly a good thing in the sense for municipalities, in the sense that people that want to buy bonds want to have quality debt. So in this case, we expect that the township's going to follow through, hopefully with a AAA rating. So hopefully, at the time of pricing, people will want an excellent credit rating when they're issuing, when we're going to issue bonds. So the fight for quality here, we think, will be a positive, although, you know, you never know with some of the volatility that we see, it may see in the market. Again, that's why we want to have that flexibility to decide to price bonds on a particular day. This is a quick snapshot of the current debt portfolio of the township. The current principal balance is about $43 million. What we call your run rate, which you're currently budgeting on your current debt service is about $3.8 million. I should point out, the township has built into their budget some assumptions of what we think the debt service would be going forward, so it's, it'll be very, very close to what we expect this overall borrowing to be. So we're kind of, we've built much of this in the budget at this point.
And you're referencing the 2023 budget?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we've been, we've been talking about this for a while now, and as part of the budget process, Amy and I were in touch on the assumption, so. So this is the current look of what the debt portfolio will be. What's important here is there's, you know, multiple types of transactions here associated with the potential projects. What we're going to try to do is tie the useful lives for the projects that we're going to borrow. So in many cases, we're going to have some shorter-term debt because the useful lives of some of these things are a little bit shorter. So the scadium, solar, and emergency apparatus kind of fall within a 10-year period, so we'll be able to amortize all that debt that, in the shorter increments. The library being a longer-term useful life, we'll be able to amortize it over a longer period of time. In this case, the, because of the borrowing amount being a little bit lower than expected, we're going to be able to amortize that over 22 years. The total maturity of this is about, you know, about 25, 27 years at this point, once it's all said and done. What we're expecting, and I should point out, this is conservative, and for anyone that's seen me over the years, we usually show numbers pretty conservative when we're, especially when we're a month away from pricing. We're hoping this will be far lower than what we expect, but based on, you know, current estimated rates at a, with some cushion, we think the total annual payments from a budgetary standpoint will be about $1.5 million starting in 2024. Your first year will be a little bit lower, and that's mostly from a timing standpoint. It's when, you know, we issue the bonds, the first interest payment, and the various components associated with that. So it'll be a little bit lower your initial year, but going forward, it'll be about $1.5 million, million and a half. Overall, when you combine the existing debt portfolio of about 3.8 and the potential new borrowing of about $1.5 million, you know, you're going to have a maximum run rate or budgeted payment of about $530,000, $5,300,000. Again, we hope it's going to be lower than that. We expect it to be, but that's what we'll have to look for going forward. You may get a, I may get a question if I'm sitting here, you know, how does that look when you compare yourselves, you know, with other local governments? Again, you are currently a AAA. We've been, you know, speaking with Moody's over the, over the last few years. We've been very upfront with these, this particular project that we've had some budgeted amounts around this range, so they've seen this plan over the last few years. Obviously, interest rates are a little bit higher than they were back then, but overall, given what we're expecting to borrow here, this is about what they were seeing at the time. There didn't seem to be much of a concern when we talked with them. Given that we expect this to be kind of your largest chunk of capital projects that you're going to have over the next few years, we feel very comfortable that this will be real well-received by Moody's. I can't guarantee that until we go through the credit process, but given, you know, the demographics of the township, what this debt looks like, it will fall off in a few years as far as that your portfolio going, going from 5.3 million down to 3.3. So given that you've kind of built your budget to kind of cover these costs, and given that you're traditionally well-run and a strong overall township, I think we'll be in a good position once we go through that rating process. Anyone have any questions on this page? So just to give you an idea, this is an example of what we think the breakouts will be. And I didn't bring this up, but you heard me probably in the past. We're going to have essentially two series of bonds. Although we're talking about one parameters in total, meaning one established amount that we're going to borrow, we're going to break this up into two series. One will be a tax-exempt issue, and the other will be a taxable issue. We haven't finalized exactly what the taxable amount will be, because there's still some work to be done, but we think this is a conservative estimate of what we think we will do. Mostly, this will be done as a tax-free financing. So again, we think based on this estimate, it'll be about, you know, $13.8 million, give or take, on the tax-exempt, and maybe around 6% on the taxable. It could be a little bit lower than that and a little higher on the tax-exempt, but again, still working through that. Finally, this is the proposed maximum parameters schedule. When I look at this, I get scared. It's a high interest rate at 6%. It's more than you're going to borrow in $24.5 million. It shows the payments being, you know, close to $2.1 million. Why we do this again is we're making the assumption that two things are going to happen if we borrow. If, you're not all in the public markets, but when you price bonds, there are two alternatives. You can have premium bonds or discount bonds. Premium bonds mean that you have coupons that are higher than the yields. So we're making the assumption here, we're probably going to have some 5% coupons, which means there'll be some premium. But it's very possible that we may have some discount bonds here, too. When you have premium, that means you reduce the principal balance because you're, you're paying higher interest rates than what the environment, than the yields. On discount bonds, it's the other, other end. So we have to make the assumption that both things will happen, and by having that, we have a higher principal balance, a higher interest rate, to make sure to give us the flexibility when we price the bonds, to make sure we can fill in the principal payments to make it fit within the Commonwealth's rules. So it's a unique concept, but we have to look at both sides of the worst-case scenario to make it fit the Commonwealth's rules. More than likely, it'll look very similar to the pages that I showed here. Around 5% coupons with yields hopefully lower than that, and on the taxable, around those interest rates. It'll look something similar to that in real life. I'll stop if anyone has any questions from that front.
Actually, I do have a question. So in terms of the maximum parameters, I understand the concept. In your, in your experience, the dealings that you've had, have you had a project where you had one of these projects go south and you hit the maximum on both sides?
No. Yeah, it's, it's almost impossible for that to happen in that case, because one has, either one has to happen or the other has to happen. So conceivably, let's say the interest rates go up dramatically and we need to use 6% coupons. Okay, well then, now we have that 6% hit, but more than likely, that would make that a premium bond issue because of that higher coupon, which means we reduce the borrowing amount down to making this up, you know, $17 million because there's a premium built in. So it's virtually impossible for both things to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Schlesinger, I don't know if this question's better for you or Mr. Richter, but could you just remind us again about the distinction in the projects of taxable versus tax-exempt?
Sure. I'll try to hit most of this, and Bill can jump in. For most government issues, a traditional transaction, most of the time, townships like you are going to issue through a tax-free instrument. You know, if you're building, a township building like this, that was a tax-free issue. In some cases, the type of financings that you may do may have some potential private use in some capacity. There could be some specialized uses for agreements that you have associated with your particular entities. The good example here is the scadium. The scadium in itself, although it is, you know, township-run, it has some private entities associated with that. So giving the township maximum flexibility, given the size of the transaction, we want to make sure that it fits the tax rules. So in this case, we have to make that a taxable financing. The good news here is because we're going to amortize it over 10 years, you won't get hit with as long of a, of a higher interest rate on a longer period of time because it's only a 10-year period. So the use, the intended use is really what it comes down to, to determine the tax status. Again, most of the time, we do tax-free instruments for local governments.
And the same with the emergency apparatus, that's the fire.
That's correct. Yeah, there's, again, some things we're working through, but we're getting very close to determining how much. Go, Bill. You didn't want to say anything, but unfortunately.
I would say that the fire trucks are good, tax-exempt. The ambulances, the ones that are used by Narberth, may be questionable. That's because Narberth, and they're all township-owned assets, but it's the use by another organization as opposed to the general public that creates the tax issue. Fire trucks are used by volunteer fire companies, which are generally treated as if they were political subdivisions in the first place. My understanding is that two of the emergency vehicles are going to be owned and used by the township, so that's fine. It's just the ones that the township is basically giving to Narberth ambulance for their exclusive use. Then I recall at some point that Mainline Health was putting decals on the ambulances, too, so that's another form of use. So, yeah, we're trying to be conservative. I mean, it's possible if we really wanted to strain, get those all tax-exempt, but it, same with the scadium. Scadium has a whole lot of use. The numbers that I looked at last year showed well over 50% of the use of the scadium was by outside organizations, not just the general public, outside organizations. And when you have that, then you have a choice of structuring your contracts with those outside organizations to make them fit certain short-term use exceptions in the code, which would mean that you would have to limit those agreements, whether oral or written, you know, 90-days contracts, 90-day agreements with no right of extension. So, and there are a lot of different organizations. The Hawks is the biggest one, but, and they use the facility, I think, 200 days out of the year. But, I mean, use by the high school is fine. The school district is a, is a governmental entity, but there were a whole bunch of other uses, and so the choice is, do you, how much flexibility do you want to retain in operating the scadium? Do you want to agree to limit your flexibility to having these short-term agreements and hoping that everybody that's currently been using this thing for 30 years gets what they expect, or you want to just not have to worry about the tax rules? And so it's, again, it depends upon how much, how much pain you want to bear, but the other thing is the scadium, I, as I understand, it actually shows a profit. If you were just generating, if you weren't generating any revenue from the asset, that would be fine from a tax standpoint, but I think, my understanding is the township wants to keep running the scadium the way they have been. Everybody seems to be happy with that, and wants to, as best as it can, produce revenue from the scadium that exceeds operating expenses. So given all of that, it was, at least at the president's, my recommendation to do that on a taxable basis and not have to worry about anything else. But as far as the fire trucks, I think are good, and we'll, maybe we can work something out with the ambulances, but that's kind of not a whole lot of money to worry about.
In terms of the final decisions as to which category you're going to try to put these into, is, I mean, is that a conversation that you'll be having with Amy? Is that?
Well, yeah, I've been talking to Amy about it for quite a while. She seemed to be comfortable and understand the issue with the scadium, is the issue that I raised. As far as the others, I mean, there's even an issue with the solar panels, but I talked to your engineer the other day, and he gave me all the comfort I needed on those. If you generate power from solar panels that you sell to a utility, then you become, become an output, becomes an output contract. I mean, there's a lot of these little weird things for these projects. But I think, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that scenario that I just laid out. If, if the, if the township has a huge desire to get every last dollar of tax-exempt financing out of this, then we'd have to go back and do a little bit more analysis. The question is, is it worth it?
I appreciate.
Just one assurance is that the, the way we're proceeding now is how you described, where we maintain our flexibility with the scadium and we just, we don't go as tax-exempt.
I think that's, I think that's the issue, and that, that's not a legal matter as much as it is an operational matter, but I don't think you could do all of it. I mean, there is clear private use there. If you wanted to limit the use of the scadium just to 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, then we could, you know, maybe do it that way, but then the township would be at risk. You'd have to make sure that those entities all maintain their 501(c)(3) status for the life of the bond issue, and I don't think you, I don't want to speak for you, but that, that would be a headache that you wouldn't want to have to deal with.
To take on additional administration costs, I don't think, administrative costs.
Right, and I mean, I, we consider the scadium as, as one of the major revenue-generating assets of the township, and part of that revenue generation comes from the ability every year to rethink things, to be flexible, to enter into long-term contracts with folks, which makes the place much more, makes the revenue steadier. And I'm certainly familiar from my days of doing this work, Mr. Richter, that, that it is always a question as to, do you want to take 25 years of audit risk and all the, all the administrative issues that go along with that risk to make a certain amount of money, or do you recognize that that's the cost of the flexibility?
There's nothing wrong with doing a taxable bond. It's, it's, it's just, and, and, you know, back three, four years ago.
And it's not unusual, not unusual for a municipality with diverse operations to do a taxable.
Well, three, four years ago, governments, when interest rates were zero, everybody was doing taxable bond issues because why, you got, you got the same low interest rate, you didn't have to worry about the tax rules going forward. So changed now a little bit, but, so that's, that's basically where, where I'm coming from on it. I don't know if that helps.
It helps considerably.
The ordinance is a parameters. It's kind of like previous ordinances. The ordinance authorizes the bonds to be sold to Janie Montgomery Scott, which is the investment banker that you've identified. So part of the ordinance is an authorization to sell. Nothing works in this ordinance, and no bonds are sold unless the township decides to proceed. The, the ordinance is just an authorization. The, the delegation is to the president of the commissioners, the vice president, director of finance, and the township manager to review and approve or disapprove any discreet particular sale of the bonds with particular terms. So it's not like this is on autopilot. It's, but I, I do think that that's, the, the numbers look a little goofy in a sense, but if you consider the fact that they may want to move around, you know, of that 2044 maturity with a maximum amount of $1,750, maybe they want to move some of that to a different year. You have to, you have to build in the flexibility for each year, and then when you add all that up, you get $24 million instead of 20. So that's the reason for it, but.
And going forward, something that you, you just indicated, just for the clarification of the people in this room, and also anyone watching it either live or, you know, on recording, what we're discussing right now, the ordinance that we're looking to pass, is basically just kind of the administrative feature of this lending, that there are still more steps to be taken, including the actual individual projects themselves, that as of today, you know, while we, we want to spend this money on the library, we want to spend this money on emergency apparatus, we want to spend it on solar, we want to spend it on scadium, no actual project has come before this Board of Commissioners and been approved. And so, you know, we still have, you know, discretion. Well, first off, there'll still be an open debate, and people still get the information about the specific projects, but also we have the ability to kind of tweak things as we go down.
If you want to drop a project, you can drop a project. If you want to issue less bonds for a project, you can do that under this ordinance. Now, the ordinance does approve the projects for which the bonds are to issue. Projects are just described in a very broad.
Broadway, there's, there's really no meat to the bones quite yet.
If the township hasn't approved any of these projects, then I, I would like to know that. But if you decide, I don't, we don't want to do solar, or we don't want to do two hook-and-ladder trucks or something like that, you can do that. Or you don't have to issue any bonds for it. You could make this a bond issue just for the library if you wanted to, and you could issue the other bonds later. The ordinance has the flexibility, for the most part, of doing these at different times. It's most efficient to do everything at once, so you don't have to pay people twice, but.
And also on the interest rate environment for the investment of the proceeds, it makes sense to borrow it all now. In the past, we've done, for some of you who have been on the board, we've done multiple series of bonds, 10 million tranches. Here, because of the economics right now, your investment rates on your borrowed funds are over 4.5%. We expect that this borrowing will be under four, around 4-ish percent, so conceivably, you're going to be earning at least as much as what you're going to be borrowing. In the past, you would be borrowing at, making this up, 2.5% and earning 2 basis points. Now, we're actually about what we're borrowing at. So the math actually makes sense to borrow it all now, assuming you, you know, meet the spend test, which we've talked about a million times, spend the money within three years. That's, that's the concept. It's a kind of a unique time in that sense. You're doing very, very well on the investment side, and the borrowing rates aren't that much different.
Well, thank you for the 30 seconds on taxable versus non-taxable.
That's my, hey, I tried.
Tax exempt.
Does anyone have any other questions on, on this topic? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlesinger, and thank you, Mr. Richter.
And I will move this out of the way if there's someone else to speak. Maybe not.
Any of my colleagues have any questions or comments at this point? We will move to our next agenda item, which will be, I will invite Gail Farley-Samarath, president of the Township Civic Council. Come before us.
Good evening.
Good night, Mr. Schlesinger. Good night, Mr. Richter, and good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Gail Farley-Samarath, and I'm the president of the Haverford Township Civic Council. Tonight, I have with me our vice president, Ben Vaughn, and we're going to be presenting to you an outline, an overview of the civic council, what our history is, what our mission is, how we support and serve the community. Now, basically, we're doing this because we haven't been here in a while, and there's a lot of new faces, so we wanted to make sure that we got this to you. So when we think about the mission of our civic council, it really is about building community. It's about making sure that we enhance the quality of life in Haverford Township, and also to keep the public informed. Now, as you see our list of board of directors, you may notice some familiar names. Now, many of our members serve on multiple committees within the township. They're a very, very dedicated group. They are probably one of the hardest-working groups that I know, and I'm very privileged and blessed to be able to serve with them. Now, we do have 13 listed here, but we have 15 on our charter, so I do, if you are thinking of anyone that maybe would really be a good candidate for the civic council, please make sure you send them our way, and we are advertising for that. The other thing you may have noticed is the names are familiar because I've asked our council members to actually reach out to folks either within their particular ward that they live in and/or adjacent commissioners and create a liaison agreement with them, because we want you to be able to, just be able to pinpoint a liaison for the civic council for your needs. So how did it all start? Well, this happened 82 years ago. Back in 1941, nine different groups, associations, clubs, got together on a, a point of advocacy. And if you look at the names, you probably noticed that, ooh, I represent that ward, or I represent that organization. So these are, you know, these founding associations for Haverford Township that started it all. So what was the first action? It was actually to advocate for a bond issue. We were just talking about bonds, right? Advocate for a bond issue to extend and expand the township park system. And we know what gems our parks are. are now, right? It's the envy of some other townships when they look at our parks. And it is basically, that is where it all started. Now, HTCC is what we, you know, our civic council. And what it does is basically, it was designed at the first meeting to actually be the clearinghouse for all these little organizations with all their little problems, to be able to come to a parent organization and have some guidance and have some resources. So what are the roles of the civic council? Basically, to inform the public about current issues. You have probably seen our faces before as we stood behind, you know, talking about the comprehensive plan and other meetings, you know, across the township, whether it's, it's Ben and I or other members of our team. We advocate for community improvement, supporting our member organizations, and of course, promoting new initiatives. And we'll talk a little bit more about what we consider action priorities. So what are we? What do we consider ourselves? We actually consider ourselves an organization of organizations. We have 53 different members. The main cohort of our members are business and public, but as you can see from looking at that list, we break across every different organizations within the township. These are our members. Once again, coming back to that whole community and, and serving and supporting. So I talked a little bit about those new initiatives and the action items and action priorities. So if you think about, you know, if you want to know what an action priority is, it's basically a project or a proposal or an issue that people have really gathered amongst themselves and decided, this is something that we need to do. We need to do this in the township for the betterment of the community. And they, basically, there's a form that they fill out, they submit it to us, we review it. And if we approve it, then we help them develop and promote the different things. Now, as you can see from our list, you know, some things that you probably never even thought about actually started, you know, that is cemented now within our township, started as an action item, where a group of people got together and said, you know what? We need to do something about the trails. We need to get together, talk about the Friends of Haverford Trails, and next thing you know, it's an action item and it, it goes running off there. But the one thing I really want to share with you, for those of you that may not be aware of it, is what accomplishments the civic council has made. So can you imagine not having Haverford Township Day? Right? How many of us look forward to that first Saturday in, in October? Right? It's great community, you know, everyone's happy, you know, it's that type of thing. Of course, we didn't have it during COVID, unfortunately, but it is something that actually, Haverford Township Day started in the civic council. Also, the music festival and the Discover Haverford, which is a business conglomerate, a business community, that actually all started as an idea within the civic council. So remember, we've been around for 82 years, right? And of course, the recycling center and many other items that you see here. So how do we get the word out? Our website is one of the main items that we use to be able to get the word out. Now, we have a calendar of events, so our members could actually put their events, their fundraising, whatever they have, they can actually put it on there. We have the civic group handbook, which basically helps civic associations be successful. You know, there's many civic associations, they have a lot of turnover, you know, in leadership, and sometimes they might fall, you know, down, and then they get back up. And it's one of those things that we're here to help them. And I know Ben is going to go into a lot of detail about that. We also have links to our member websites. So all those civic associations, all those members, the nonprofits, anything that's on our website, we actually have links to. And we can actually, you know, have, send them, get them contact information and the social media, whatever it might be. And I would advise you that if you have new residents in your wards and they're wondering, who do I contact for a civic association? Who do I go to? Please feel free to just send them to our website, and they can contact that easily. Now, we are updating our website this month, and we're also updating our group handbook. So that is just some of the resources that we have. And now I'm just going to turn it over to Ben to finish up describing some of the other great resources that we offer the township.
Thank you for having us tonight. It's very nice to get an opportunity to reintroduce our group and to see all the commissioners that we haven't seen in the past. So my name's Ben Vaughn. I'm the vice president of the Haverford Township Civic Council. We are coming out of COVID swinging. We have been unable to meet, as many groups have, for, you know, prolonged period of time. We're getting back and having people get more active, and it's really been a nice momentum builder. So one of the things that we are doing, I'm going to go back a slide real quick just to point out, the community calendar that we have on our website is very up to date. It's relatively comprehensive, and we're trying to make it better every day. We're doing a refresh. Hopefully, that's going to be our strongest feature on the website, so it's an easy place for people to come and get information, especially if there are people in the community that want to find out where their local civic association is being active. This is a place where they can come. But we hope that everything can be, that's within our umbrella, can be a two-way street as far as communication goes, because that's the fundamental point of the civic council is to create an ongoing conversation between the township and the constituents at the organizational and the individual level. So that's the ultimate goal. There is a new climate action website. A lot of effort has gone into putting this together. It is a, it's an inspiring website. It's got a lot of useful information. A lot of stakeholders in the community have contributed to it. It's a one-stop shop. I encourage you to check it out. The primary means by which we promote activities in the community is the informed citizens newsletter. I'm willing to bet a lot of you already get it. We have a strong subscriber base. It has stayed strong for a long time. And beyond just the number of subscribers, the click-through rate is very high as well. It's over 60%. There's a lot of people who are interested in reading what comes to their inbox. So we encourage the township to take advantage of that when there's an opportunity to do so. An area in which we are expanding, what we have already been doing, we will occasionally host workshops. We had a community think tank to try to drum up ideas for future action items back in 2021. We're working with the Haverford Adult School to try to promote workshops or develop workshops that'll be responsive to community needs that are articulated through our membership or just getting in touch with folks that are in our respective wards, to put these together and make it ultimately easy to have a community organization in the township. The other thing we do besides organizational ends is to just make it easy to throw an event. If tents, tables, chairs, radios, make it easy to have a movie night. We want it to be as easy as possible for local community groups to just have community and their parks and their local areas. We are doing a refresh of our handbook. The last one was in 2020. This is obviously too small to read, but the idea is that it's pretty comprehensive. And again, the idea is you put this in the hands of somebody who wants to organize within their, their neighborhood, and it should be a one-stop shop. It makes it very easy to hold the event, very easy to know what the next step is, and if you have a question, who you can get in touch with. So we would like to extend an invitation to all the commissioners. If we can be of service to you, we hope that we can. But some ways that we can hopefully help is just to, if you need a connection to your civic groups, you want to find out who's active. There's a lot of changeover in these groups. They change all the time. We try to keep our lists up to date. We actually invite, if anyone on this commission has ideas as to what would be a useful workshop to put together to help groups get more organized, if you see a need in the community and you wish somebody was working on it, we invite you to let us know because we're interested in meeting those needs and rallying the people and the expertise necessary to make that an event and make that a resource in the community. So the last thing, this has been an ongoing conversation for the last 82 years, and that's the point, is that this group can be more continuous and more dedicated than perhaps local neighborhood groups, but groups like ours, I'll read the last point. Organizations like the Haverford Township Civic Council make the community more desirable, make it by creating pride where people live and work, unifying neighborhoods, and infusing lives with joy. And that's the point. So we hope that you'll be in touch. We'll continue to be in touch with you. Our upcutting members meeting is April 26th at the Crack, 6:30. You're all invited. We hope some of you can make it. Should be a nice time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, and thank you, Ms. Farley-Samarath. Thank you for your dedication to the township. Thank all of your colleagues on our behalf as well. 82 years, going strong. Probably 82 more. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Next item on our agenda would be commissioner committee updates. If any commissioner committee would like to, any committee chair would like to report on anything?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Trumbull.
In the absence of Commissioner Hart, I'd like to report on the work of the Shade Tree Commission. In support of Arbor Day on Friday, April 28th, Haverford Township's Shade Tree Commission will distribute beautiful young shade trees free of cost of 100 lucky township residents. There are 10 trees of 10 different species. Winners will be chosen by a lottery. The tree lottery is only open to Haverford Township resident property owners, and one lottery entry is permitted per household. All winners will be randomly drawn. The online web entry form went live today on our township website, and will close on the 21st of April. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee updates?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to give an update for the commissioner committee on redistricting. This committee met on March 1st and March 16th. Data from the 2020 census indicates that the development in the township over the past 10 years has created population disparities in some wards that should be investigated and corrected. While these disparities do not affect magisterial, house, senate, or congressional districts, the committee will continue working in the coming months to develop an action plan for the board review and approval.
Commissioner Forstiegrub has the, I know this is preliminary, has the committee come to the conclusion that changes must be made?
It looks like there will need to be some adjustments because of growth in the fourth ward involving the Haverford Reserve.
Thank you. We will look forward to further reporting on that. Any other commissioner committee updates? Hearing none. Chief, I will invite you up for the police update. It says crime update on the agenda. I just, as a matter of course, simply don't want to ask you to give us an update on crime.
There's no update on crime. I would just tell you what's.
Give us an update on the activities of the Haverford Township Police Department.
How's that sound? All right. We'll change the name.
I maintain my sunny disposition.
The monthly chief's report, how's that sound?
That sounds great.
Okay. For the month of March, we had 21 criminal arrests, one juvenile arrest, 169 traffic citations issued, excuse me, 23 non-traffic citations issued, 206 rerun written warnings, and 593 parking tickets. We had a burglary attempt at 700 Buck Lane. It was a domestic situation and no prosecution. Four Raymond Drive, a rear door was found open, which is down at the builders, at the industrial park down there, turned out to be a employee that was allowed to be in the building. 500 North Eagle Road, a broken garage window, beer cans around the area, no entry was gained. We had an aggravated assault at the Yard Pub. It was a mutual fight. Two males resulted in one victim being transported to the hospital. We had motor, one motor vehicle theft, 2500 Block of Belmont, observed several males trying to steal a Hyundai Elantra. Actors described as a white male juvenile, a young adult, wearing a gray hoodie, and a black male juvenile, wearing a black hoodie. The resident confronted the actors and they sped away in a stolen car. The vehicle was recovered the next day at 25th and Allegheny. So that tells you what's coming into, a break into our vehicles in, in the township. We had 200 Block of Ford Lane, unlocked, Acura was entered, brief card and credit cards were taken. And at the YMCA, her victim reports her gray Subaru was entered and her wallet was missing. We had, we'll be on next month's report, but over the weekend, we had 11 catalytic converter thefts, which is very high. It's not just us. It just seemed they, it went through the roof over the past two weeks. Most of them along township line back in the streets in that area, back in the Chatham area and along there. So one person saw and heard a noise outside. They saw a white vehicle with tinted, black tinted windows driving away from the scene. So no arrests have been made. We've spoken to Lower Mary and Upper Darby and other surrounding areas, and they had the same rash of them over the weekend also. And then K-9 usage, 500 Block of Country Club Lane for a stolen car, K-9 Jango was deployed, PSP, Pennsylvania State Police for an open air suspect on a vehicle, and a Chester PD for a shooting suspect in Chester Township. And one male forgery, it just says mail to Green Lane in Philadelphia. That's all I have on that. That's my report, commissioners.
Chief, just let me ask you one or two questions. 539 parking tickets. Is that an unusual number?
Well, with the Duke Park mobile, it is very, very high. But we, I'll say, we adjudicate a lot of those for senior citizens, that people do have problems with the system. So I can't give the numbers that we are canceling for various reasons with valid complaints. So there is some, not concern. There are some issues with people trying to get used to the new system.
And there were, I know there were comments in previous meetings and, about whether or not some of the things about the program can change with regard to minimum amount of time.
We changed, I think, that we allowed time. Dave, we did make a change. I just don't remember what it was.
That's correct. I think you increased the minimum, but I don't recall exactly what it was.
We did change that, yes.
And I think there were a couple of other potential things we were looking at, but so there is an opportunity to make changes.
We, as complaints or concerns come in, we make changes as needed. It's easily done. We just make a phone call, and it's done remotely. But it has been working well. The parking meters are still on the street. You can still use the parking meters. You don't have to use the app. You can still put quarters in the meters. So it is doing.
Right. As a reminder to everybody, these are located in our township lots.
In our township lots. But you can use the app on the meters also if you want to, but you can still put your nickels, dimes, and quarters in the actual meters themselves. So the, you use the app in the township lots only.
Is, is it ultimately the goal of removing, of changing over the meters on the streets to just app only, or is it our long-term goal?
We've never considered that.
Not considered, okay.
We've never considered that. We felt that the meters are there. There's no reason to make that change. The app is available for the meters, so you don't have to use it if you don't want to.
And you mentioned the uptick in catalytic converters. It had been some time since you'd reported any. Is it a seasonal thing with the weather?
I won't say it's seasonal, but all the 11 vehicles were all Volkswagens. So they're targeting a certain car. I don't have the answer what is in those catalytic converters, but obviously, there's a lot of value. And then they're riding around looking for that kind of car. Before, there were just certain brands of foreign cars, but there's, they were all 11 of them were Volkswagen products. So. And the only thing we can suggest, it's hard, you know, for people to hide a car, but if you have a driveway, put it in your driveway, keep it well lit. Some, some newer vehicles have a vibration alarm. If somebody tempers with your car, the alarm will go off. And we just make sure you lock your vehicle at nighttime, or anytime.
Thank you, chief. Anybody have any questions?
Chief, just, catalytic converters seem to be spiking. How are we on the mail?
The mail, I had one report on mail.
Only one?
Only one. So it's, you know, it's, I don't have an answer for that. It's up and down. The postal authorities have gotten more involved now. There has been arrests made, but Lower Mary recently just had a rash of them also. So I can't say they're gone, just like our vehicles enter. They come and go. They come in waves, it seems. And we make, we make some arrests, but then another group arrives and it starts all over again. So.
Thank you.
And then chief, it should be on Mill, Mill and the Wood, or Woodmere area? Because I heard a thing, or, or the other day about that, that that got hit again.
The mail, the post office mailbox at the triangle there.
Yeah.
That seems to be targeted, yes. Yes, we did get that one. That'll be in next month's report. So somebody else had a question?
Well, I was just saying, let me take advantage of that, this point right now to make a public service announcement. We are approaching April 15th, which everybody knows is tax day.
Yes, very concerning.
Now, while maybe half of the tax forms that go out are requesting refunds and maybe another quarter of them are making no payments, but the state of Pennsylvania, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, actually requires you to write on the envelope, payment enclosed. So this is a reminder to everybody, anybody that is doing their taxes and sending them in by the mail and not filing electronically, go to the post office.
Inside.
I would also suggest you track it. Go inside and either note your envelope as. Go inside and either note your envelope as, get it either with tracking or a certified mail, but hand those tax forms to the clerk behind the counter. Do not put them in a mailbox anywhere, especially tax
Correct.
forms whose address indicates that there's a check enclosed.
Am I correct in saying that I think you can pay your federal income tax via an app or you don't have to mail a check? I don't know, but the state.
Well, e-filing is available, I believe, to all filers of certain, within certain ranges for free. Otherwise, I think it's a small fee. I'm not sure about Pennsylvania.
I'm not sure either, but you can't file your federal taxes.
What's that?
You can't do it electronically for payments and refunds in PA.
You can pay, I'm sure.
But for anyone mailing, make sure you just don't put it in the box.
Just to clarify, I actually think tax day is the 18th this year.
Oh, yes, it is, isn't it? It's the 15th, Saturday.
Two more days.
Yeah, how about that? Is it not the 17th because of Patriots Day? Is that?
I don't know.
I couldn't tell you why. It's not our tax, so.
We should just. All right, so we have moved past this portion of the work session agenda. We now go to discussing the items that will be on the agenda next week. The first item that will be on the agenda next week is ordinance number P4 of 2023. That is the 2023 bond issue that we just heard excellent presentation from. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the 2023 bond issue? Hearing none. Move on to the next ordinance, ordinance number P5 of 2023. This is an ordinance enacting changes to our township code relating to responsible contractors. Do you have any questions or comments or discussion on that?
I apologize. I stepped off for a second. Are we on the responsible contractors?
We are, yeah. Where, did you, we just went past 2023 bond issue, assuming you had nothing on that?
Yes, we're on. As far as responsible contractors, the one comment I would just have for that is, I believe as it's written right now, it has $100,000 threshold. And just in conversations and just hearing from some people around the township, our engineer and so on, you know, our township does bid on a large variety of projects. And, you know, unfortunately nowadays, the, it seems that $100,000 doesn't go as far as it used to go. You know, I would just be remiss if we did something that unduly handcuffed our township manager for being able to be as efficient as possible in terms of handling the multitude of projects that we have in light of the fact that we do have some good relationships with existing vendors who, you know, have done good by us over the years and may or may not, I don't know, but may or may not fall within the specific parameters of this ordinance. I would just ask my fellow commissioners to entertain the possibility of raising that minimum threshold. You know, I believe Delaware County is at a $500,000 threshold. You know, a $500,000 threshold would obviously, you know, place the next biggest project that we have coming down the road, the library squarely within the guidance of this ordinance. But I think it would also give our township manager and the rest of his directors the flexibility that they, that they may need, you know, moving forward. So that would be my only comment on this is if my fellow commissioners would entertain raising that threshold.
Thank you, Mr. Gondik. Any other questions or any response to Mr. Gondik?
What level are you requesting?
I guess at this point, knowing that Delaware County said 500, I would request 500,000.
I feel like.
Commissioner Caveter?
Oh, sorry. I feel like there's a wide range we could look at. Without knowing too much more, I think 100, I think that's a good point that it may encompass smaller projects than we want, but I think 500,000 is really high. So I would hope maybe we could find somewhere closer to the middle of that, but I would be in favor of it going a little bit higher.
I'm not sure 500,000 is too high. We're replacing 400 and some feet of sewer on Brookline Boulevard and it's 450,000. So, you know, for digging ditches and replacing sewer, you know, to put the burden of having to have those guys go through apprentice programs and everything, and handcuff township manager to get that thing done in a timely fashion. You know, replacing sewer lines is a very expensive proposition. We talked about that using our money for a program there, but it's, it's not, not an overly significant amount in today's world when you have those type of repairs to make on our sanitary and sewer systems. It would be an all-encompassing ordinance, though. Somewhere, we've got to use some judgment, I think, in, in doing this.
Can I ask a question of the township manager? How much was the facade project, just generally speaking? I'm just trying to get a sense of range of the whole building.
So the facade itself has not been bid yet. When it was awarded, it was part of the general contractor's contract, and I don't have the dollar value that was assigned for the stone on the facade this evening. I can get that for you.
I'm just trying to get a sense. The sewer project is very, is very large and important. But I'm, I just don't know the proportion of the kinds of expenditures that we make.
I was going to, I wasn't asked, but I was going to give some input and some perspective. If, let's just say hypothetically, the facade is a quarter of a million dollars. So that would be above the $100,000 threshold, it would be below the $500,000 threshold. But I, I think that Mr. Wexler has a really good point about, we do an awful lot of sanitary sewer replacement projects and other outdoor projects like road paving and things of that nature. But let's focus on sanitary sewer for now that are over 250, but less than 500. And so if pushed, I think 500 is a reasonable number. And I think it also, as somebody mentioned, does address the issue with awarding separate prime contracts for a project of the library.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Let me ask one of my colleagues to, to talk about, first and foremost, the purpose behind a responsible contract, responsible contractor ordinance and, and why it's under consideration right now. And then we can perhaps address in what circumstances it should apply and what circumstances or type of projects maybe it need not apply if there is already some other reviewing body or specifications that have to be met that can ease some of the concerns we have in other projects that we do. Is there one of my colleagues who would like to address the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Forstiegrub.
If you look at our current township code and you look over the section that, that this, this ordinance would affect, it goes into, sorry, I'm flipping through pages. It addresses our Chapter 44, Administration of Government, Part 10, Physical Affairs, Section 4-1008, Establishing of a Purge and System. If you go and look at that on our township code, it is like basically one sentence saying that the township may bid out jobs. It doesn't give a lot of parameters about how that bidding process should work. And this ordinance establishes quantifiable, measurable criteria that a contractor would need to meet in order to receive work here in our township. It fills a gap that is not in the state law for a first-class township. It fills a gap that is not in our code or in our Home Rule Charter. And this ordinance is designed, the, the basic purpose of this ordinance is to make sure that we, when we are constructing a project, that we have people, companies who are going to finish the work and do it in a responsible and responsive manner so that the work is well-done, that we don't have a lot of expensive change orders, that we hopefully don't have delays in construction, that we've got well-qualified people working on the job site who are doing the jobs for which they have been trained, that they are being paid by the prevailing wage laws, that, and that they've got all their safety requirements through OSHA satisfied so that we know that people are being safe as possible on the job site. But bottom line, it is to be as responsible with our taxpayer dollars as we can be for these big projects that we're going to be undertaking, including the library.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Can I just add?
Yes, Mr. Berman.
So, I mean, just, just to go back when, you know, when I first started and this building had already been approved, but I think two months into me starting, the bids had gone out and the bids had come back. And at that point, you know, we are required by law to accept what is the lowest responsible bid. And with no additional definition of responsible contractor language, we were just basically required to accept whatever bid came in that had the lowest number. And what I think the benefit of this type of ordinance does is it allows us to take back a little bit more control, just as a resident would when they're hiring anybody. We take back a little bit more control in just saying that per the state laws, where you have to be, you have to pick the lowest responsible bid for good reason. They're trying to make sure municipalities like ours aren't wasting money or just handing out contracts to, to people that they know or things of that nature. So they, they set this financial parameter. But if you don't have a definition of what a responsible contractor is, you as that municipality essentially, when you put out the bids, give all the rights. And then you're required to take whoever it is that gives you the lowest responsible one. This is just an outline of us saying, we want people that we hire to take these basic steps to assure that they're going to be doing a good job for us, that they're going to be responsible in their work and that they're going to hire employees who know what they're doing and they're going to run their business in a way that we would want to choose them. Because we can't just pick and choose and do it willy-nilly as we're doing it. We have to set up a system in place ahead of time before the bids go out. I think there's a discussion to be had if you want to talk about what the number should be in terms of whether it's 100 or 150 or 250. I think 500 is kind of high. I mean, for a municipality our size, when you're talking about a county like Delaware County where they have a budget in excess of 300 million, I think, you know, them saying anything over 500 sort of, you know, they're talking sheer numbers in terms of how many projects they do. For a municipality our size with our budget, you know, I think something in the six, closer to the 100 would be more appropriate so that we can assure that the projects we're doing are being done by contractors who are going to hire people and do the job right and up to our standard and we're not running into situations, you know. I, I don't think we have that many jobs. I understand the issue with sewers, but there's a lot of municipalities in this area that have this type of language. So I think instead of the burden being on us to make sure that these sewer repair companies, you know, that we can give them work, the responsibility is on them to make sure that they're going to prove to us ahead of time that they can be responsible contractors and get the jobs. And it would shock if a sewer repair company that does a lot of municipal work in this area hasn't already dealt with this and isn't already working to make sure that their employees would meet criteria such as the one outlined in this. So again, I, I don't look at this as something where I'm trying to make sure that contractors we have relationships with can still do work for them. I want to make sure that all the contractors we hire are going to be responsible enough to do the type of work that this municipality requires. And that's why I would support something like this.
Thank you, Commissioner Murkowski. Anybody else?
We, could we, would it be possible for us to investigate this with vendors that reside here in Havreford Township? I mean, we have some HVAC companies that do work here. Like, we would have been prohibited from fixing the stadium a couple of months ago. I think it was Boyle or somebody else, you know, it was over $100,000 to do an air conditioning unit. The library repair, I forget who did that, but what was the cost of that, Dave? It was a couple hundred thousand dollars to replace that. It would have detailed, I mean, I'd like to find out if it's a burden on the small, medium-sized companies to do this, so we know this. I mean, it's, it sounds great that we're doing this, and I'm all for it if we get responsible vendors, but I don't know what kind of burden we're placing on companies that reside here in the township. We have, we're just saying it's a nice esoteric thing that we're going to make sure, what Kevin said. But there's only like five or six municipalities have done this. So it's not like every municipality's got this responsible thing there. You know, Westchester, the county, a couple others, Abington, Jenkintown, none, none around here. So it's, you know, I'd like to do some research. I mean, we're not under the gun to do this next week, but to find out, you know, what burden we're placing upon companies that are headquartered here. I'd hate to be chasing people out of here if, you know, they're not going to bid on our work even though they're residents here and their companies are headquartered here if we place it undue burden. You know, you're talking about a lot of certificates for small companies and register people, provide documentation as part of the bid package. If you've never been in a bidding process, writing a bid is a hard thing to do when you have, when you're going by boilerplate for municipal government or especially the federal government to do that. It's, it's a Herculean effort to respond to a bid in a timely fashion and accurately. And you can tell by the number of bids that get thrown out. We do it for our residents. We make sure our, our codes inspectors drive around the township. They see somebody doing work and it doesn't have the permit on there. The reason I had, I had three complaints this week. People, they stopped it last week and they complained to me. Who ratted me out? Nobody ratted you out. We're there to protect you. We're making sure that the contractor that's doing, in this case, it was putting in a patio and hardscaping, was licensed to do it because the guy hadn't gotten a permit. So we check his licenses. We make sure he's authorized to do it and all the other things that our codes department does to make sure to protect our residents for do that. It's not to hassle a resident. It's to make sure it's to protect them. The other one, the guy was putting an addition on through the garage and he said, quote, "It was my cousin doing it," yet they didn't put, they didn't put a header over the bearing wall, the outside wall between the kitchen and the garage. That, I'm not going to say that the wall would come down tomorrow, but in the next 10 years if it did, the new owner, if they sold it, would have to come back on the owner's. So we're protecting the owners there. So I'd like to see if we're, we're putting undue hardships on everybody across the board. We're doing this for good reasons, but we don't really know what impact we do it. And the best piece of advice I got when I became a commissioner 16 years ago was if you put a stop sign on one corner, you're going to make that person happy. We're going to cause a problem down the other two blocks because the speeding, they're going to make up the time. So I think we just got to be a little bit careful. You know, I'd like to find out, get a meeting with, you know, get the civic association here. They get a lot of builders and contractors part of there. Have we done due diligence with them at HP, the HPED or the Havreford people now? To find out what, if we're doing, putting any undue burdens on our businesses that are around here.
But the concept for that, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying and I respect, I respect what you're saying, but the concept is that we're not, we're not talking about the small business that does, you know, the HVAC for the person's resident down the block. We're talking about a job that is over $100,000 for municipality, you know.
I've got a neighbor that did, the neighbor, the guy that did the library is a Havertown resident.
Right, but I, I just, the type of HVAC supplier, provider that does work for municipalities and would build, bid on a job for the library or doing HVACs.
I just want to know what kind of burden we're putting on any of those companies, that's all.
Okay.
If we, if we've done that research or not.
And, and, and just so everyone in the public knows that there is written into the ordinance, there's an exception for emergencies that Havreford Township under the direction of the township manager can determine that if, in the case of emergency, if a job needs to be done and there's a particular contractor that can do it within the timeframe and that's who needs to do it, township manager can still hire that outfit.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Commissioner Wexler.
Actually, I have a question to follow up on the comment about emergencies. And I guess this might be more directed towards our solicitor and, or I might have missed it. But I did see the, the reference provision about, you know, in emergent circumstances, the, the, basically we can waive the ordinance, or the township manager, I believe, can waive the ordinance. Is what? What, in your research on this topic, as we're not the only municipality, I mean, we're one of the few that have it in place, or are trying to put it in place right now, but we're not the only one, obviously. There is no definition of emergent circumstance. So what standard would apply to define that?
The term of emergency is defined, it's not defined, but it's used often for all bidding requirements under the first-class township code. Again, it's an emergency that you can't create. I mean, if you see it coming, it's not an emergency. You know, an opened hole on the ground that's filling up with water, that's an emergency. If you have time to prepare for it, it's probably not an emergency. What's unique about Haverford Township is Haverford Township already has provisions in their ordinance related to the waiver of a competitive bidding process, whether or not its responsible contractor ordinance applies. This is current, it says that six members of the board may authorize by a poll the waiver of the competitive bidding process when they declare an emergency circumstances. And your ordinance says that emergency purchases shall be limited to situations where A, delay in making the purchase would present a health, a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the township; B, purchases required by unforeseen circumstances and that delay would seriously hinder the effective delivery of essential township services; or C, that there are no feasible alternatives to the emergency purchase. So your ordinance does a good job defining what this township believes is an emergency. However, again, emergency has been interpreted more broadly under the first-class township code. However, this ordinance, as proposed, would fit in with that subsection F with those items I just read as well.
Thank you. Is there a difference between, well, there's an emergency that you just described, Mr. Walco, but does the, does the ordinance, or do ordinances like these also contemplate the circumstance where no bid is received for a project by anyone who qualifies under the requirements of the ordinance?
I don't think this ordinance, as proposed, provides the, an exception that if no bids are received, that this ordinance would no longer apply. I think in that type of situation, you may need to obviously put it out, bid, maybe rearrange your bid to see if you can get additional or different bids. And I believe there is a process in place, I think it's in the first-class township code that says that once you put a bid out, like two, two times and you receive no bids, at that point in time, you do know, you no longer have to go with the lowest bidder at that point in time. So that is built in, I would say, regardless of whether or not this, this ordinance would be received.
Are there any other questions or comments? This will be considered next week. Next on the agenda is traffic, first reading of traffic ordinance. Clearly, this is not controversial. Parking in Cathmer Road. After that, for those three ordinances, we will be considering resolutions next week. The first resolution, Resolution 2305 of 2023. This would be a $3 million ARPA fund allocation to the, excuse me, to the library renovation project. Any questions or comments from any of my colleagues?
Just that I, this is, this is a good use of, of ARPA money to support a community development project along with the federal grant money that we got, that we heard about from Mary Gay Scanlon and from the various state grants that we've received. You're talking about upwards of $6 million that we've, the township, through some hard work, has been able to secure in order to offset the total cost of the library renovation and expansion project that we're doing. You know, just to show that we're doing our best to try to, you know, make this project and do it as responsibly, but make it one that we can be proud of in the end.
Thank you, Commissioner Murkowski. Any other questions or comments?
Would have to say that it's great, too, and if there, there is anybody else that would like to give some more money, please, oh, no, we're all, all on board. I know Phil and the group there is all on board, too, so, so, so reach out to any friends that you have, that you know that are big, well, big, big-time donors, so.
Well, I don't speak, I don't report to speak on behalf of this board, but I think some people share my view is that we are, the township is undertaking a significant commitment here, an effort to build the library. We are counting on library leadership to really concentrate on fundraising effort and make this a true community enterprise and not just one supported by both township taxpayers and federal taxpayers, turns out. So seeing nodding heads there in the audience is validating my, my feeling that we have a strong commitment from the library to be driving in donor dollars as well as grant dollars. You probably will at the next meeting, this is not one with, since you're not on the agenda, I'm going to pass on that for now, but I imagine we will hear from you next week. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues?
Had we come at three instead of five, say, for the library? Had we arrived at the $3 million number?
I think we discussed it at a finance committee meeting, and that was sort of the number that we arrived at in terms of something that would be reflective of a substantial amount of ARPA money, but not dissuade any future, for instance, sewer projects or something like that that we want to do in the future. So I think it was an attempt at a substantial, a substantial amount of ARPA money to help contribute to the overall cost of the project, but then also something that would not completely drain our ability to use ARPA monies over the next couple of years for other community projects in this area. And I believe at the time, the finance committee made that suggestion to this board, and that's where the $3 million number is coming up.
Are there any, are there other projects on the horizon that you were, where you're kind of earmarking or reserving funds for? Because, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, for the senior thing, we had only spent a minuscule amount, so we were willing to give away a couple, you know, $400,000. So since we didn't have any projects earmarked, I just wonder why we can't give more to the library? I mean, it's a one-time, 50-year building, and we've got $19 million to use, so.
Mr. Wexler, you may recall, there was a projection of, of the expenditure of ARPA funds in our latest budget. It wasn't beyond what was committed to this year. There was a, let's say, an aspirational allocation of ARPA funds that was in one of our long-term capital projects going forward for the next three or four or five years. So it's, we have what we've spent and what we've committed to in the next year in our budget, but we, there have been, in more general terms, allocations of ARPA money into different projects reflected in our, reflected in our, in our budget.
I think there's also township departments that are scheduled to report back to both Dave and Amy in terms of potential uses for those ARPA funds over the next several years. And in discussions with Amy during that finance committee meeting, that was a number she was comfortable with without unduly burdening, burdening other planned projects.
We were given that information, so, okay.
You think what?
No, I, I'm not aware of what the projects that the departments are coming back on.
I'm, not either. They're going to have to report to, Dave.
Hence my question.
And I can just, in following up on what Kevin said, Amy's obviously not here, but yeah, that was a number that, when we talked about it in the committee, that she felt comfortable with as a, as a good balance. And so I think, you know, we give some deference to, you know, kind of her, you know, budgetary planning on, on coming to that one.
I'll just, looking at our 2003 final approved budget, page 37 was a page where we, where we described ARPA projects in the fiscal years 2023 through 2026. Again, aspirational, some of them, although the 2023 land projects were put right in the, in the budget itself, which was approved. These are still individual projects that need to come before us and be approved, but we did have access to that information and we did publish it to the township and we, we did adopt it. And none of this was done outside of the purview of our township manager and our township finance director.
Oh, no, I know it was on a committee, but I just didn't, you know, I don't think we made that public.
Any other questions or comments on 2305? 2306, Resolution 2306 is also the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the Senior Initiatives. That is a...
That's a second reading, right?
This is just a resolution, Mr. Gondik, and this is, this in particular is the Senior Citizens 2023 Volunteer Expo to be held on May 31, 2023, the coffee in an open house to be held in the fall of 2023, and an amount of $6,000 approved in the 23 budget. And the board is by resolution agreeing that the use of funds from our ARPA fund can be allocated to this project.
I apologize, I misread that one.
No apology necessary. But that is, that is what that particular resolution is. What, what Amy's plan to do is anytime that we are going to allocate directly ARPA funds to a project that we have budgeted in 2023, we will be, a resolution will be placed before this board to approve that allocation of funds. So there's one more under consideration, Resolution 2307, and that is to also allocate engineering and construction costs for the Brookline Boulevard sanitary sewer replacement in an amount not to exceed $375,000.
And I can say that I'm thrilled about this, and I can say that I know that everybody on the street from where the impact is will, or is all, or is thrilled, thrilled, too, but can, can I ask when this work would start? Do, do we know? Or do we know when it will start and where, where it will go, go from?
So if the, if the board elects to award the contract next Monday, the contracts have to be executed, insurance has to be lined up, then we'll have a pre-construction meeting. That pre-construction meeting will give us a definitive start date. Just a little FYI, the work is scheduled to be done at night.
I'm, I'm sure everybody there is fine, fine with it because that needs to be replaced, so.
And it roughly goes from the parking lot out to just, just into Darby Road. That's roughly the footprint of it. But prior to any, shall we go on the ground and get a more definitive schedule?
Okay, great. Thank you.
I actually do have a question on this. So in, in looking at the letter that you indicated that identified the contractor for this project, it's a $331,000 and change project. The contractor that's been referenced, you indicated, has completed numerous projects for the township in the past, and the work has been satisfactory. I guess my question, Mr. Pedoni, is would this contractor be precluded from future projects based under our responsible contractor ordinance that we're entertaining?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do you know if they're a union shop or not?
I'm fairly confident they are not.
So, okay.
One question, and I direct, I direct this to Mr. Walco. Aren't there other entities that have apprentice programs besides union shops?
Yes, there are. In fact, I was looking at a number of them online earlier today. The Associated Builders and Contractors, their Eastern Pennsylvania division, have a number of apprenticeship programs that they have set up that also qualify, and they can be searched on the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry website, which would be, I think, the majority, if not all, of the apprenticeship programs that run through the local Commonwealth Department of Labor and Industry, although federal apprenticeship programs would be qualifying, too. But I do know Associated Builders and Contractors have their own apprenticeship program, as do a number of trade schools and such.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution 2307 of 2023? Next, we move to another item on the agenda. We will be considering next week a settlement agreement for the, to ratify a settlement agreement between the township and the contractor for water claims and punch list issues, but this does not include the facade of the building. We will also be considering the contract for the Brookline Boulevard sanitary sewer. We will be considering a contract for soundproofing curtains for the paddock pickleball courts, Paddock Park Pickleball Courts. Nice alliteration. We will, and sticking with the Ps, we will do a proclamation for Arbor Day. And finally, we will be considering appointments next week to fill some remaining unfilled slots. The Civil Service Commission alternate, two spots on the Human Relations Commission, two, that's right, one spot on the Icebreak Advisory Board, and one spot on the Shade Tree Commission. And then finally, I would like to appoint Jerry Vision as the Ward Six Senior Citizens Representative. I do not need to wait to next week to do that as this is an individual commissioner assignment that could be done at any time. Thank you, Mr. Vision, for agreeing to serve. That is everything on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the things I just described? Any other questions or, oh, yes, I know that we have one more announcement a township manager would like to, would like to address, something that needs to be considered next week.
Thank you. First, I want to mention that our Director of Information Technology, Rick McClary, a 15-year employee, recently retired, and it was bittersweet, great guy, did a lot of good work for the township and for the police department and for all of us, really. In order to appoint a new department head, the township manager makes the appointment, and the Board of Commissioners has to approve it at a public meeting. And so next week, I'll be recommending the appointment of Paul Howman, who has worked for the township for 11 years, to the position of Director of Information and Technology. And Paul's here. Give a little wave.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks for coming out tonight, Paul.
Paul, after the meeting, you and I can talk about preserving the world's only existing BlackBerry. Yeah, so this kept Rick busy. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues or from the staff? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.